You're off.
Okay, so we're gonna need to have a special meeting for this.
Next week.
Next week. Now, my question is, what is the good day that we could aim for? And is there any particular date? It's out, I guess.
No, there isn't, I guess. You know, just like tonight, we're going to have to check first with Richter's.
In fact.
See if we can.
I see you don't have to set the meeting tonight. My suggestion would be to talk to your three applicants.
Right, well, that, that's gonna be on first, because it's going to be.
Once you know what date works for everybody.
Right.
Then you can announce the meeting.
Right.
We did ours on a Saturday morning, because it served. Our three applicants were all. Don't, don't you, don't you criteria we're going to put is that it has to be in the next week.
Yeah.
With that, we're, like was said here, we're going to need to, obviously go by what's good for them.
Right.
Now, when, when do we have to set up our background check?
My suggestion is, the supervisor, as I agree, is, once we pick somebody, if the job is dependent on passing a background check, I don't see the need to background check everybody until we actually offer them positions. Worst case scenario, worst case scenario, yeah, worst case scenario, now you do have two other applicants that we consider. If someone were to come forward, that, you know, we couldn't hire that person. I just think that's the best way to do it, that way, you know, and that expense wise and time wise, you know, you need to have a lot of it, so.
And if you want, I can take those applicants and call them, like, to the man and find out.
My, my question is, okay, just putting it out there, this is being out there, and that's true, we have Mary. Maybe do it, because I thought it was that way. Yeah, yeah, but not a commission member, so nobody can question my line on it. They told me a couple of things on that, but I appreciate the offer on that.
Thank you a lot.
You know, yeah, I just, I think Mary would be the best one on that.
The key's working tomorrow.
Yes. And, you know, which was going to be your last day, but, you know, you know, that's something that we're gonna talk further down now, so. So, we definitely can, I can give her going on that tomorrow. Uh, any other questions on that? And well, well, I was gonna say, once, once we find out whether it's a good day for the individual, we'll take it out, contact everybody. What I want tonight, and just, I'm gonna give everybody's email. I apologize, but I, I wonder why I notified everybody the way I did last, because I wasn't sure about the emails. And I had a couple of emails from a couple of people, and I didn't wanna, you know, send it and find out later on, I'm showing you, it's my kind of. I tracked you down, so I, I can work on that. I will let you know exactly what's going on there, so. And then I will get to you as soon as possible. I will get with Mary, and I will pass along the food we have on there, so. And then, let's see, what are we onto next here? All right, so now we have to approve salaried benefits for the current supervisor. Now, I'm just gonna state for the record on this one is, I think we should do a range. Because depending on, you know, when we're looking at, we listen for the interviews about, to determine whether we feel this person has the background, so I'll do it. Uh, now, that range, anybody have suggestions here?
Well, I think this is a, a merit that really has to be determined by our bookkeepers currently, you know? I mean, we, we, you know, table financials for the last couple of months.
Well, here, uh, but here's the thing. We do have money that was set aside for previous directors. We know what that amount is there, so we do have that amount to work with. Obviously, you know, we don't wanna spend all that amount. That was kind of the general consensus over, we've been talking about this, but we do have that budget in it already. So, that, you know, we can do from there, we just can't go over that, obviously. So, in other words, uh, you know, whatever the high, whatever our final salary for our director was, that's the money that we'll hold, we have to deal with.
Yeah.
So, what was our top, they made, call fifty-five thousand?
And I think it has to be, to measure it to their experience.
Experience, right. So, do we want to put a basement in, or, and then go from there?
I mean.
I would, I would put it near, would not exceed, salary should not exceed fifty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, well, that, you know, that's gotta, that's gotta be given there, but, yeah, okay.
Right, we're talking including compensation, you know, insurance.
That includes everything else, that's total salary.
Okay, so total, total, okay. So, that, that would be different, because, you know, we're fifty-five, and as mentioned, he was just like salary.
Right.
Okay, so, okay, that, that would make, uh, so, should that exceed? Do we want to put in a low end?
No.
Okay, I mean, is that the consensus that we just, just cap it?
Cap it.
Right, we just cap it, fill it, fill it in from more.
Fifty-five thousand, so, can I have a motion that we?
I'll make the motion, do we cap this at fifty-five thousand salary and benefits?
Include the, uh.
For the salary of, of a new person right now.
Okay, do I have support for that?
I'll second that.
And, and I have a real, oh, I don't have a. But that is something, you know, just discussion about, that is something I can go to the, our bookkeeper and say, you know, if we pay the next amount, give them this, before it's at work, so we don't, you know, so we don't find ourselves stocking and barreling or something.
Okay, Don McRae.
Yes.
Joe Hatchett?
Yes.
Kathleen Martin, yes, and Mr..
Yes.
And that motion passes.
Okay, and as our famous one, our truck. Uh, approval of selling in nineteen eighty-three, or?
Ninety.
Ninety-three, okay, I'm in my classes tonight. Uh, Chevy truck, the commissioners, you handle putting it out there, we do have a title, I have a title for it.
Yes.
Um, you know, do we wanna sell it?
Well, I, I'm having an issue with this, because I thought we had already resolved to scrap the, the truck.
Well, it.
Thought that was a motion that passed.
Yeah, that is, so I guess the question is here, it was.
It was.
Well, that's, that's why I'd like to reject this, because it's part of my maintenance program.
What's that?
And, uh, the Chevy truck, we've, as you stated, the last direction our board did unanimously, unanimously.
Yeah.
Was back in October, November, that we would scrap this truck, we would pull it to the value, the scrap came up, it was all passed by the board unanimously. I saw the truck around town twice, once at Coleman's, and then once at Reliable Ranch. And, geez, that truck looks like ours, I went checked the license plate, and sure enough, it's ours. So, the last place I took was Reliable Ranch. And, uh, somebody took upon himself, which I look at as unauthorized by the board, wasn't authorized, it should've been brought back to the board, because we ordered a motion on that truck. So, we have now just spent so far that I found out two hundred and fifty dollars compared to the truck.
Right.
So, right now, the truck is sitting at the beach, locked up, behind the fence, the truck is locked, and the fence is locked. And the keys are back in the box, and I would say, now that it's been unauthorized repairs to that truck, we might as well drive it back into the ground again.
Joe, I have a quick question for you, you said you had seen it around town, was it at another location as well?
It was at, at Coleman's, across from Ed Coleman's garage, for quite a few weeks, and then all of a sudden, it was at Reliable Ranch.
Okay, but were there repairs at both, do we know?
I don't know.
No, just repairs at Reliable, I do have a building for that.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Because I have not seen.
Yeah, no, I, I just got it today, so I did pick that up today.
Okay, so is that an outstanding bill?
Uh, that's an outstanding bill on it.
And I.
Work has been done, so.
I talked to Logan, the owner of Reliable Ranch, and I said, he'd been trying to get a truck moved out of Parkland lot for two, three weeks, meaning numerous phone calls. And I said, Logan, I understand that you're really tough on partners here, I will promise you will get paid for that truck. And I made a promise to somebody, if it doesn't come through, I'm liable.
Wow, you mentioned yourself, but the outside comments, so.
So, that's what the truck is doing.
So, here, here we're at, work was done, there, you know, we can go back and forth, and yes, we did authorize it.
Right.
But it's done.
Yep.
So, here we are with the truck that runs.
Yeah.
It is running, uh, thank you for picking it up, I appreciate that, that way.
So do you.
Yeah, I can see it, I was there today, and I was like, yep, that guy could see where that truck put it with the hands again.
Okay, so.
And so, here's, here's, here is, do we wanna sell it, or do we wanna use it? Because we're basically, unfortunately, put into a situation that we didn't authorize, but we now have an operating truck. You know, uh, scrapping it doesn't make any sense to me now, that it's operating, do we wanna sell?
Is it gonna need any more maintenance? I mean, does it have?
Uh, it could be a car.
I mean, does it have brakes, does it?
Yes.
Yes, it does.
Yes, I drove it.
So, Joe, in your opinion, that you, you already stated, I think that you think that we should go ahead and continue to use the truck?
Yes, because, uh, the truck isn't worth that much, it's nineteen ninety-three Chevrolet, B-six automatic work truck, that was an entry level truck. Now, I heard rumor, and I got laughed at by a few different people, that I had heard the word, somebody said that truck was worth between two and three thousand dollars. And they all laughed at me, and they said, shoot, guys. They said, is it a V-eight, no, is it short box now, is it four-wheel drive now, I said, this is a D. So, if we're ever gonna sell it, we have new, we have two new, we have two used car dealers in town, it'd be fiscally responsible to drive it there, say, what's the retail value of this truck?
Correct.
Yeah, so.
But I believe as taxpayer money, wouldn't it have to be, um?
It'd have to be, but I'm saying.
Well, at this point, I guess, pretty background, I think at this point in time, to put the money, it's wrong, you know? Obviously, I kind of get in the sense that you guys are like, yeah, we don't wanna sell it.
Right.
Well, certainly not conscripted, so, then I ask maybe to reverse the motion to scrap the truck?
No, we're just making a motion, we're not gonna sell the truck.
Yeah, uh, right now, we're concerned about what's on here.
Right.
Don't we have to reverse the motion that was approved?
No.
Or just make it one?
No, uh, well, okay, let's make, let's have someone make the motion saying, we're not gonna sell the truck, and we're not gonna scrap it.
Exactly, we're not gonna keep the truck. I'd make a motion that we keep the nineteen ninety-three Chevrolet truck, do not scrap it, or do not sell it at this point, because it's travel unusable.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, I guess money's involved, so let's have.
Okay. I mean, that's just really responsible, I think, for the team.
Why don't you make your motion to pay the bill? Oh, well, yes, I guess we could, thank you, that's actually not a bad idea.
So, do you have anything?
And amend that to the two hundred and fifty dollar bill to Reliable Ranch, for the repairs of this nineteen ninety-three Chevrolet truck.
I did promise to get to this, so we have next week, so, yeah.
Okay, with the amended, um, motion, I will still second that motion, and I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a roll call, Donna?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Hatchett?
Yes.
Kathleen Martin, yes, motion passes. So, we're keeping the truck and paying Reliable Ranches.
All right, next item, I think we already discussed.
Yep.
Okay.
Do you wanna repeat this, or, because it's being recorded, we already discussed this next, before we pass out?
I think he was up and running, we already discussed it.
Yeah.
It was like, three minutes till I thought we started.
Yeah, now, we.
Thank you.
Uh, next one, then, we'll just move down to softball league. All right, I've been talking with a couple of the team managers from last year, looks like we're gonna have between six and eight teams. Um, what I got with them is that I wanted them to come back with some recommendations on how they want the structure. Wanted a suggestion, because it was a major issue last year, with a couple of teams was, uh, makeup based. Suggested what made that they'd have a, uh, between when they end their season or when they have playoffs to do the makeups. They're looking at Thursdays and Fridays, um, which I think is fine. Thing is, that we're gonna have to start considering, because it's good news, actually, we're having a lot of requests for use of our fields. Matter of fact, I need to get back with, uh, one about the girls softball, that's easy to field, we're not out there. I want to find out for them the first, you know, where they were at, because I figured they were the bigger of the two on that. Biggest issue they have with us, and it's the same issue that they have with us, is field maintenance. So, we obviously need to get that graded, and hand it down, and that, you know, that's where a supervisor would be great to get in there, because that's not something that, you know. I am going to ask, and Mary sees this before I ask her, she has the right to shoot me for not mentioning it to her before. I am gonna ask her assistance on management, because what they're scheduled, if you keep her on, her schedule should be there on Friday, and that would be a major help for anybody, myself, or whoever else, if we have someone that's running it. And plus, answering the forms and questions during the day, and that, that's another thing, that's, you know, was a problem for me doing it last year, you know, on the fly, trying to find one special, when we had umpires, sure, then umpires got out. I worked it, and, you know, this, you know, couldn't accomplish a lot on the phone, a lot of times, in a few minutes, so, that is something I am going to ask her on that. My goal is to have the teams meet, a meeting within the next ten days or so, and then together, then, uh, hopefully, we can get going at the same time the supervisors normally used to be going.
Are you talking the women's league, or are you talking the softball league?
The softball league.
If we used to have all the captains, have captains meet.
Right, yeah, that's.
Managers.
Manager meeting, that's what I need to have, you know, so everybody is on the same page, so we're not, you know, so that I'm working on there. Anybody ever like to assist on this? Fantastic.
Yeah, you can tell after me.
You have to have that, so, um, that, and like I said, that's another one, I will keep you guys updated if anything drastically changes.
Yeah, the third thing that got thrown in the mix, and we have a discussion, is little league.
Yeah.
We got the girls league, we got the girls who wanna play up here, we have little league, and we have, I think it's gonna be, is that gonna be summer ball, fall ball, that's what we're about to do.
Right now, you know, this is kind of like where we're at. We absolutely positively need to have somebody here during the day to construct it, and it's going to be a lot put on pretty quickly. But, uh, right now, I do not want to promise anybody, anything other than, like, these people with the softball, this is the co-ed league from last year. They were helpful in giving themselves something ready, so that's the only reason why I'm even saying, okay, because if it weren't, if I hadn't been involved with it, knew some of these people, I'd be saying we got to postpone, because I know, you know, they're, they're gonna be doing a lot more of the lifting on it this year, with this league, and it's been done in the past, so. What I wanna do on that is, let's get our supervisor in, and let's see what we can sort out. And that's the, the best way to do that, instead of promising or saying, well, we know what to see, we don't know.
Right, so for now, I think the softball, the intramillion, you know, the co-ed softball is a given.
Yeah.
I, I would actually love to see how the little league, um, be able to utilize our fields as well, they are, they will be struggling here with the construction.
Right.
Uh, of.
That, that's something too, that's going to be a lot trouble too, because they are losing the field, and it's going to be an open year, you know, project going on, so that's something that I'll, we need to have people to input that.
So, you know, the kids are super important to all of us, especially me, um, you know, working in the field, but, um, I just wanted to get that on hold, like, because I know that they are one of my.
Like I said, I was all for where these fields overuse, I mean, as many people here as we can, so there is no, you know, I don't make many doubt that, you know, I don't want, I just want it done, so everybody has a better care.
Correct, I just wanted to mention that.
So.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Now, as a relief valve, we used to use Cyclone Park, the village's ball field, it used to flood quite a bit, but they said they got that fixed. We used to take all our equipment down there to line and drag the field and, and everything else, so. That, that is, that could be something, that could be village parks' relief valve for, for some of the little league players or anything else.
Now, I, speaking of the dragging, that is something before we go, if you know anybody that could do our fields, right, that is a big thing, because that's something that, you know, the quality of those fields is what's gonna make or break us, because, you know, we don't wanna go out there and get hurt, we don't wanna have a whole play becoming, you know, the black.
Well, the biggest thing is, last year, a little backup report is, I, I dragged all the fields last year, we were, we're having to get some crusher dust in, and spread it, because we lost our dome after you resurfaced, so we might have to look at somebody coming in, because they got the equipment to redome that. But I took a lot of, I took the drags out there, I chewed up a lot of the rims in the infield and stuff, and I dragged all fields last year, at least got a play on them. But we're to a point now where we're gonna have to have a redome, so they drain. And lining and dragging isn't that bad, but if you don't know how to line and drag a field, you can do more destruction in an hour, that'd take four hours to straighten it out. Some people don't understand how to drag a field.
So, Joe, is there a resource that could, uh, have one?
I will get a form of contact, I know, Brad Lawson might be one of them, he was out of Davidson. I used to know the guy that used to run, uh, the baseball for Davidson Township, and he used to line and drag the fields and dome it, so. He might have a source or hoop to redome that without charters and arm a leg.
Okay.
And the crusher dust, crusher dust is crushed high creep, that's the, and everybody was changing over clay, which is really expensive and harder to work, so. I'll do, I'll check my resources.
If you do that, I would really appreciate that, because that is the biggest thing, I think, considering the no man, and what they had to go through, the chaotic situation it was last year.
Yeah.
We'll have to make sure.
Well, we don't have any layer bodies, you know, on some of these in our fields, so that's, I guess, that's.
All right, um, any other comments on that, Nancy?
No.
All right, now, we're to public comment. Members of the public can address the board.
Excuse me, just, just so I say, you added, uh.
Oh, I, I'm sorry.
Add Mary.
And I apologize for that?
Yes.
Okay, so, tomorrow, the program for Michigan Works, Mary's at Danah Line as of tomorrow. I, the other day, I was talking to her, and I was asking her if she could stay on, because I'm looking at this book, we have, like, basically, you know, I mean, Tom's here, but, you know, Mary does a lot of the administrative stuff for us, and right now, she's tracking down some of the people who worked at the beach last year, which I would have no idea how they're buying. She's been very helpful with the, uh, bookkeeper, and in bills and everything paid time, and so, what I asked her was, she said she'd stay on as long as we leave her. Uh, I was gonna say that fifteen dollars an hour, I think it's quite a friendly part of the itself, and, you know, what I would be seeking tonight is a motion that we approve, uh, authoritatively fifteen dollars an hour for Mary to stay on, at twenty hours a week.
And no benefits?
No benefits, no benefits, no.
Um, I'm gonna make a motion, we need Mary, especially with the new supervisor coming in, what, uh, she would make this same one.
We need her for transition.
Yes, it's not longer.
Yeah, well, that's the other thing too, it's like, if we use this down the line, and see if she's up to, you know, like, either one, you know, so.
So, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to keep Mary on, um, as the, you know, primary, um, secretary and office health here at Swanson Nature Center, at the rate of fifteen dollars an hour flat, for up to twenty hours a week, um, as long as she will stay.
Right, no benefits.
And no benefits.
Yeah, we did see.
And I'll second that.
All right, so, because it's an expenditure, we're gonna go ahead and do a roll call, Donna?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Hatchett?
Yes.
Or Kathleen, yes, I'm excited. Now, really, can you imagine? Oh, my gosh.
Yes, no, I can't, I did a lot to imagine.
Thank you, Mary.
And, sorry about that, Mary, I didn't get you. So, we're down to, uh, public comment, members of the public can address the, uh, board, have to be recognized by the chairperson, comments are limited to four minutes. The board may extend this time by up to official four minutes prior to majority vote. Prior to addressing the board, members of the public are requested to clearly state their name and address for the record, and any other comments?
Michelle Renard, two thirty-seven West Rose Street, Hallie. Um, I'm also on the board for Hallie Little League, um, we would be very interested in having further discussions about helping with field maintenance, repairs, obviously, that's, and that actually the main chair.
Oh.
For our league, um, so, any questions, help you guys need, we've got resources, we've had a couple of local companies that have helped us out a lot, because it is for the kids. Um, so, whatever you guys need, we would like to get put on an agenda at some point in the near future to discuss our future of collaborating with parks.
Okay, great, good to meet up. Um, I'll reach out to you, I'm sure you'll see I'm around, but I'll reach out to you to the next regular scheduled meeting, maybe you guys can bring something.
Yeah, the president and I have both discussed a few times, wanting to come in and sit down and brainstorm, whatever, you know, just something that'll make things work for the kids. We have some solutions worked out, um, you guys are part of, hopefully, that solution, so, um, but, yeah, we've, we're, we're moving forward, we're making progress, just, things are there.
George Harris? Yeah, um, George Harris, six foot one, East Maple Street, um, three things. Question was asked earlier about, um, roll calls, when you're spending money, and if you're passing a resolution. Things like a resignation, you don't have to, if you do, it doesn't hurt anything, but it's too tight a hand to do it, that's more of a legal or spending money. Second, I think somebody had mentioned to me in a previous conversation, that your, uh, regularly scheduled meetings have not been published yet. If you need help with that, stop in the township office, we do that on a regular basis, Karen or Christie can help you get that published.
Yeah, Courtney sent me that.
Well, I understand Courtney had, but hasn't, that family needs to get them.
Yeah, with our lack of, uh.
So they can hear. And then my last question was, you mentioned the truck was locked up at the beach?
Yes.
Why not back in the barn?
Well, the barn has been fouled out yet, and I know, I haven't been inside the barn yet this, this winter, and I don't know where everything has been missed parked or anything else, because we got a lot of vehicles in that barn.
Oh, I used to.
And that truck was only one-wheel drive, because it's standard difference, so I didn't wanna get stuck out there in front of the barn. The beach was easy backup, only gates and parking on cement.
I used to curious. My, my second word is, we have some, making moves up here, because we don't have eyes up there, not at the beach, we're.
I hope so.
You're close to.
Just.
Okay, um, so, anybody have?
Under, under this remarks, it should be, it should be commissioners' remarks.
Right, yeah, I saw the council, anybody have anything that?
I do, naturally. The only piece of equipment that is down right now is the three-ten John Deere loader tractor, and developed a, I, I suspected head gasket leak last fall, would be used by, the people that fire it, when she started her week. So, I got it in there, and I didn't, I haven't got it in there this winter yet, but I gotta, uh, let's find out if it's a blown head gasket, and if it is, I'll dismantle the tractor. Under the approval of the board, I'll give you a diagnosis of the tractor. If it's a blown head gasket, we got to take the couplings out, strip down the head, I already talked to Holly Auto, they set me up with a machine shop, because the head would have to be machined. So, I'm working on that, and there'll be no charge from the labor, uh, tearing down that tractor. Uh, it might, I, I, and I'll be forward, I do anything to, once I diagnose it, I will come up with costs of rebuilding the head, parts, labor, uh, as far as the machine shop labor goes, and I'll be reassembling the tractor myself. I've done a lot of it, so, I used to do this at four H when I was twelve years old, same tractor. So, anyhow, that's where, all the other equipment is up and running, the Dodge truck, uh, the one quad is a moth ball, in case the other one breaks down, we, it's an old one, but that one we use for dragging the fields, doing all of our maintenance work, it's running, we have a trash mower, we do the, uh, trails with, it was running last fall when we parked it. The only other piece of equipment was the purchase of a rush hog, and I know it's got a cracked frame.
It did, like that one.
Yeah, it was bought like that.
Yeah.
So, I haven't had a chance to tear it down, and. So I haven't had a chance to tear it down and re-well the frame yet, so there's only two pieces of equipment that is not running. And then it's the John Deere three-ten loader tractor and the bush hog. So all of our other equipment is up and running. You know, I nearly break nine bunters started one of them, so that's where we sit on that. Uh, we're looking at beach cleanup, probably for the month of April. We, it's, it's, people that serve uh. Title in public for uh, public uh.
Miscreants.
Yes, miscreants. Uh, we used to get, we used to have the Wham! here coming in and rigging the whole beach. We have a lot of oak trees and stuff in there, we got a lot of twigs to pick up. Last fall I mowed that for over a month with our big zero-turn lawnmower. So I chopped all the leaves, nothing went into the landfills, it was all chopped. So we still have beach cleanup to do and we'll be getting to get it with that. And especially if your daughter knows about the group, so I told her to pass it on with her mom. And I see what we can give them. Village Parks, we're, we're supposed to assign us twenty people for our April cleanup. So twenty volunteers, we're ready to go.
Can I ask a question? Who are you using for that? The volunteers, no, no longer.
Organization.
Oh, the one that doesn't have it no more?
Yeah.
The Wham! group.
Yeah, it was the Wham!, but we used to use it for Wham!, but I was asking.
Wham!
For us.
Wham! is no longer.
Right.
But the court themselves has created a program.
Yeah.
And if you don't have the name of that, you can get.
Yeah, that's who we're using now in the village.
Yeah, they don't have, they don't have a name like Wham!
Wham!
Yeah, they Wham! Wham! dog. So the other, the other new one is, uh, we've already contacted them, one of the parks, village parks commissioners. And we got assigned twenty people for our.
Yeah, that's, we used them for Dickens last year, didn't we? It was, but it's a court number, it's not like a Wham! or.
Yeah, it's something else, yeah. So that's what we're, we got cleaned up the beach, that's our biggest cleanup this year. We got some other general maintenance on trails and we had trees split over here. I took care of part of it last week, so it wasn't dangerous when there's snow, we just all finished chopping it up.
Thanks, Joe.
And we got a few other trees we got taken down.
I think we have one day. I believe our budget is due in April, am I right?
No, no. May is it?
Not April.
April.
It's due in April, but if there's any questions or anything, it's near work, we have a month. We simply have to approve it by a minute.
May, that's.
Yeah, so.
That needs to be on the agenda.
Uh, actually.
Okay, I'll go right through them.
Yeah, I was going to say. Yeah, some of them.
The only other comments I have is, uh, we got an exciting year coming up.
Yeah.
In the partnership cars.
When do you guys typically end your meeting?
That we have.
Just third one today.
No, second.
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 You guys are normal, Jerry.
Just understand, if you're going to do your budget until April, our meeting's the next week.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Sorry, I'm sure it's kind of been pushed by a year or two. Well, that's what I'm saying.
It's got to get out there, John.
If you're approving it, then you bring it to us the next week, but you may have to work on it Friday.
Right.
That's all the comments I have.
Okay, thank you guys.
Um, I, I, I have another question actually, oh, sorry. If I can. Um, are you guys going to be doing the meetings here from now on?
No.
No.
No, I was just saying, that's going to be a problem.
No, no, this was, gosh, this was just because I didn't mind going through telling everybody we're meeting at one place and then find out we couldn't sign. Who knows, especially if you spend on that. No, I like the counter record.
But I think they have a pretty tight schedule of call work, don't they?
Yes, you have the one round. I mean, everything's pre.
This evening wasn't available.
Yeah, okay.
Pat didn't have a totally a column that had taken care of him.
Okay.
I thought he was.
Okay, well, we'll need to check.
Yeah, next week.
Okay, um, I just want to say that um. Think that there is forward movement tonight. Um, you know, however it happened, um, I just feel as a commissioner that we are. Making forward strides finally, it's been almost a year that we've been struggling. And I'm happy to have the forward motion. Of course, happy forward, looking forward to spring, there is a lot of work that still needs to be done, but looking forward to the Frisbee golf. Looking forward to, um, hopefully, you know, a lot of Facebook going on here and whatnot. I really think that there's a huge opportunity that we are finally able to embrace. Would serve our community, especially the families and the recreation side of the other communities of the beach and Swanson Park. Also, kind of want to stick in there that it's Chief Narsh's birthday. So I want to say happy birthday to Chief Narsh today, uh, many, many more.
I love this.
Yeah, and I just want to thank the commissioners for, you know, pulling together. It's been a rock here, it's been a rock here. Um, I guess I will go ahead and second Patrick's thank you to Mr. Miskovich for the work that he attempted. And all the timing and efforts that he made. Mahu was trying to chair the commission. Want to tell my dad?
I think you guys covered it. Everything, like, um, I appreciate everybody focusing on, I understand, a little bumpy. Uh, I know a couple of things here, but I think overall. Mary may be kind of at the other end, she's complex information, so, no, the place has really happened. She has the Girl Scouts in here and that thing's going on. That's kind of what I want, I want to see that, I want to see the building used.
Close to the S Y O, start.
Yeah, and we're in here with the meeting and I just want to, you know, make sure that we utilize as much as we can. And the thing is, you know, rough as it's been, we have to stay positive.
Oh, that's nice. We have a lot of repast of the robust.
And the thing is, you know, we do have things we can work on better than they were. But I mean, as I said, you know, let's go there for two or three years where it didn't get used. Right. You were in those act years, not skating years.
Uh, well, COVID, COVID threw us out.
Well, even before that, there were kind of a time when this was already utilized, so now we act important. I think they're starting to discover we got a meeting place here. And with all the other people with school and all, I think we probably could have more people looking for it, so. I guess that there's positives there, you know, I think we're moving forward. On that note, I'm entered at seven sixteen.